All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to what will hopefully be a brief December 10th meeting of the New London Planning Board. I say that because of the weather conditions don't seem great, so please be safe in your travels. Thanks for coming out tonight. I know it's not easy or fun to come out on a night like this. So, we will, we're going to talk, first up, we're going to do a public hearing for the White and Stone property. Who would like to talk to that? Clayton? Do you want to just come up to the mic and just hit that button so it goes to green? Perfect, thank you.
Hi, I'm Clayton Plod, I'm the surveyor for the Whites and the Stones. I mean, basically, the proposal is to reunite approximately 16 acres of the White House, near the bottom of the hill below four corners. At one time, that was all part of the one property, and it was subdivided, I think, in the mid-'70s. And Dan and Cynthia White, who have kind of the darker lot right there, the house, have about one acre there. They bought that property 15 or 20 years ago. They're kind of getting on in years, and they're really friendly with their neighbor, and he decided he wanted to buy that to kind of protect it. So, they're keeping basically all the road frontage of the lot, and it's contiguous to Jesse's house, which is up at the top of the pond. So, basically, the Stone property ends up being 18.73 acres. The White property ends up being 4.282 acres, going from one acre. All the pins have been set. I think it beats all the zoning. It's a good thing. Everybody has been playing this for a while, and they're happy to get it done.
Yep. It takes, it does eliminate one lot, the barn lot with all of the land. The barn will obviously be annexed to the main house, so we will go from this being comprised of three lots to two. The White's house lot becomes closer to conforming. Right now, it's just shy of an acre, or exactly an acre.
Be over four acres. It will be conforming.
So, no issues on my side as far as the finding of facts. It is a conforming lot size, and each will have conforming road frontage.
Thanks, Adam. Thanks, Clayton. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. It's probably not germane to the issue. Why is it that he wants to do this annexation?
Well, Dan's not getting around very well, and he can't really get out there anymore. And Jesse just wanted, I think, to have the land, to have it kind of stay in the neighborhood, not maybe get developed or something, put a road in there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
As it stands now, really, the access into there is only through his property, and it's not, it's not conducive to putting a road in or anything like that.
Right. So, essentially, with the barn lot being the frontage of all of this acreage, there is development potential to the land, but by annexing the barn to the house, you're really taking that development potential away, because the only way for the Stones to really get up to this back portion is to cross, they have a little footbridge on the stream above the pond, and it would likely be quite cost prohibitive to put in a driveway of any kind to get up there.
There will be a 12-foot easement going through the pasture, just for recreational purposes, or tractor or something like that to clean things up.
Yep. Thanks, Mary Ann and Adam Clayton. Are there other questions from the board? From the public? I don't think so. No questions from the public. Okay, we would need a motion.
I move that we approve this annexation.
Okay, Janet moves.
Sorry.
I move that we approve this annexation.
Paul Gorman seconded. Okay, perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Clayton. Safe travels.
And Clayton did bring the Mylar, so we'll try to get that signed before you all leave. All right, so this brings us to our next agenda item. Let me get this pulled up. Okay, so, I realized about 40 minutes ago that the version that I sent out to all of you about an hour and a half after our last meeting did not actually include all of the edits that I put in when I was sitting here after that meeting. And so, I just used my notes from that meeting to put the edits in there. However, I'd really like to go back and watch the video to make sure that I, my notes captured everything that we talked about. So, I will sort of quickly run through what I added back in, in addition to some edits that Paul Vance sent before he left on his trip, that really pertained to some sort of legal stuff. And I have fresh copies here if I will pass Janet. There's three there. If you can pass those down, pass those down. And then Emily, if you wouldn't mind, when it gets to you, just get one for Laura. But the path forward for tonight would be to run through these quickly, and then we can reschedule the vote on it for hopefully a Friday morning meeting this week. We can talk about the meeting time when we get through this, but I just, it's too important to not re-watch the video and double-check before we move it forward to public hearing. Thanks, Tim. So, and I guess, actually, before I jump into the lighting one, we did have one other zoning amendment on here that I know I've mentioned a couple times, but this is one that we actually wrote last year that was housed within the accessory dwelling unit article that was a definition of short-term rental, which we were using that term in the ADU revision last year. And since that failed, we did not actually get this definition into our zoning ordinance, and we still need to do that. And this definition does not actually restrict accessory dwelling units. We have been, where town staff, fire department, Kim and myself have been working on a draft of a business licensing, short-term rental approach that keeps it out of the zoning ordinance to go after registration and review by the fire department for egress and proper notification. So, at some point in the not-too-distant future, that will make its first read at the selectman, but we need to get a definition in the zoning ordinance at a minimum, too. So, the definition that we had last year was that a short-term rental would be an accessory use of a residential dwelling unit rented for a fee for a period of less than 90 days. So, unless anyone has changed their mind in the last 12 months, we'd be looking for...
I have a question. Is it, is this consistent with what other communities are doing?
I think other communities, as far as the approach to take it as a business license or 90 days. Other communities have varying levels of what they consider short-term. The conversation we had was specifically around traveling health professionals, because they oftentimes come in and rent for a 90-day contract. And so, that's why we had the period of less than, so if they did a 90-day short-term rental to work at the hospital or wherever, that that wouldn't preclude their, their ability to do that.
So, are you saying that... So, are you saying that the traveling medical people or PT people or whatever, if they are renting for a traveler term, and it, they would not be included in the short-term rental?
Correct. As long as they took that rental for the duration, I think there are scenarios where they bounce around in a wider region for a few weeks here, a few weeks there for their housing. But for the most part, they're on 90-day contracts to start that they can re-up with, so allowing them at least the opportunity to take a 90-day contract. If they want to take three one-month contracts in different parts of the region as for their housing, then, you know, that's up to them to figure out. We're not saying that we would bar those types of rentals from New London. It's just defining anything less than 90 days to be a short-term rental, which then, if the selectmen are so inclined to adopt their ordinance, would mean that those uses are governed by the selectman's business license for short-term rental.
Rather than covered here?
Correct. There's a lot of advantages to doing it that way, but the premier advantage is that if you need to amend something on the fly, if something's not working, you don't get stuck waiting for another year for town meeting. The selectman can hold a hearing and amend the ordinance as needed, which is similar to why the septic ordinance is being done through a health ordinance. So, the municipal association has been encouraging this approach for the last couple of years, and so it allows a little bit more flexibility than the zoning ordinance does.
Okay.
If you want to actually get into, you can only do it in this spot or that spot, which is obviously the hallmark of zoning, then it needs to live in your zoning ordinance. But that's not the approach that we've taken at this point. Part of this process is, if the selectmen adopt theirs and you get through a registration, we'll actually figure out how many we have, and that can help to educate what more needs to be done.
Can you just refresh us on the longer-term rental rules? Are there any town governments that govern rentals more than 90 days?
No, it's a residential use.
It's a residential use, okay, thank you.
Yep.
One other question. Just flew out of my mind. Hold on a sec. It's gone.
And I would say, if we're going to meet Friday morning, we don't necessarily have to take a vote on this one today either. You can think about it for a couple of days, and we could have more discussion on Friday morning if we need to.
I mean, it seems fairly, I don't know, do folks want to have more time, or, because we did look at this last year, or do you want to just take a vote on it tonight? I'm kind of just looking around for, seeing some heads nod. Are you guys good to just get it done? Yeah? Okay. I'd rather just get it off our list if we could, but I don't want to keep any...
I think we should vote on it.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. So, it sounds like most people, is, are you okay with that, Mary Ann? Okay, all right.
So, then, the motion that you'd be looking to make would be to move it forward to public hearing on January 14th at 6:30 PM.
Who would like to make that motion? Mary Ann's making the motion. We need a second.
Second.
Paul seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention or opposed? Okay, thank you all. Thanks, Adam, for getting that done.
Okay, so, now the main event. Let me make sure that this is the document I actually updated this time. Yes, okay. So, I think the easiest thing to do is to run through the edits that I added back in before running through the edits that Paul Vance suggested. Thanks, Clayton. All right, so in the first 3.1 here, where I'm highlighting on the screen, we added in the field lighting on field currently named Sally Beach Field and lighting on access roads and parking areas, which access roads and parking areas is a definition that Paul... I guess it probably makes sense to talk about them all at the same time, because it's going to seem disjointed. Is a definition that Paul Vance suggested that we put in to sort of create the separation between the, the lighting on the athletic fields and the lighting on the access road. And so, he also suggested that the field lighting definition be updated a little further up to say, "artificial lighting specifically designed to illuminate fields at Sally Beach Field," so that it's specific to the field lighting as the name suggests.
This may be a minor thing, but the spelling on the Sally, it's actually Sally Shaw Beach Track and Field, and I'm going to show this to you, Adam, on my, on my phone.
Yeah.
Just so, we should get that right.
Perfect.
Because it's being called us specifically, I just want to be sure.
Absolutely. When I spelled Beach totally wrong, I was feverishly...
And then I'll just be throughout. I always see my maps in my car now, and it pops out to me.
Right.
All right. So, Sally Shaw Beach Track and Field, perfect.
That means that specific spot.
Okay. Thank you. And then let me copy that and... Okay. So, then, that first section, we had rewritten with that note, is "field lighting on field currently named Sally Shaw Beach Track and Field and lighting on access roads and parking areas shall be allowed at THE Kelsey Field within the institutional recreation zone." So, we added the, the there. And then, if we scroll down to number three, we formerly had "special event" there, and we had to change that to "temporary event." So, the heading now reads "temporary event," and the bullet reads, "short-term usage for non-athletic events may be granted for up to 20 events per year through the submission of a temporary event permit," which matched the language of what the, what we already use for the temporary event permits in town. Yeah.
Can you turn your mic on?
Your microphone.
Not to sound like the village idiot, but do people know where the temporary event permit needs to be submitted? I wouldn't know if I'm, you know, just reading this thing.
I think I said, oop, this is why we're going over this. My note has a town temporary event permit, and I didn't put the town. Thank you. Because it is a real permit.
Laura has one other.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, just one more thing naming-wise. I think instead of Kelsey Field, at Kelsey Athletic Campus, because that's what the college calls that. So, I think that'll differentiate that the, that the Sally Shaw Beach...
Right.
...track and field is located within the Kelsey Athletic Campus rather than being the Kelsey Field.
Yep. Great. We talked last time, too, about a complex, but that's better to use the proper name.
Do we use that more than...
Right there, yeah, Kelsey Athletic Campus. I think that might be the only place it is.
Okay, let me do a find quick and just make sure that...
Tim. Adam, what's our definition of short-term usage?
One second, just while we finish the edit on that.
Okay, I think it was just those three. What was that, Joe? I'm sorry.
What's our definition of short-term usage? Are we talking like one hour, two hours, or half a day, or all day?
So, in the bullet, there's "short-term usage for non-athletic events." I mean, I think it's probably not defined, but anything that's not defined in the ordinance, you would default to Merriam-Webster. There's a specific edition in state law that you, you resort to, but I'm not sure what their definition of short-term would be.
Should that be just usage for non-athletic events? Because I think the point that John was trying to make is that, or was that just between, I'm trying to think, he was trying to differentiate between regular athletic events and other usage.
By other parties or versus non-athletic events for Colby Sawyer?
Right, yeah.
Do we need to distinguish?
I'm not sure.
Because this is not exactly clear. But again, it's been two weeks since we've had a meeting.
Usage for non-athletic events may be granted after... Yeah, I think short-term may be unnecessary.
Right. It's... The operative part is the 20 times a year, so whether it's, like, that's the defining part of it.
I think the point that John was trying to make, John and Cotton, were the difference between a Colby Sawyer athletic event and if we rented it or let somebody else use it. I think that was their important defining factor, and so I think just usage for what they defined as non-athletic events, which were our regular, the college's athletic events, is, I think, what they were trying to get to.
Yep. I think that...
So, where are the other parties going to be mentioned, or is it umbrella under the 20?
I think it's an umbrella under the 20.
An umbrella under the 20. It was, but it was, but it's non-Colby Sawyer athletic events.
Right.
Right.
Which would be under the 20 umbrella.
Right.
Right, so it'd be the non-athletic event definition is any event not classified as an athletic event.
And I suppose...
The trouble is, Adam, that they could have a picnic down there. Colby Sawyer could have a picnic down there. How do they, how do we address, or do we need to address Kirshart High School playing, you know, a statewide championship game there?
That is covered by this. That would be one of those events.
Okay, that's, I want to be sure that we...
That's, that's the intent here. That's a non-athletic event, right? For the college.
That was the clarification that I think John and Cotton were trying to make, is that if it's not, and that's defined up here, an athletic event, they defined as any Colby Sawyer athletic...
Right.
...competition or practice for enrolled student athletes. And anything else, they said, was a non-athletic event. That was the definition.
I think that's not sufficient, and I'll tell you why. It says, "any event not classified as an athletic event." What if Colby, what if Kirshart is playing a game there? Playing, that's an athletic event. Where is the other entity included in here? How is it included? Our statement that that is the case, I think, is not sufficient.
I'm not sure I'm following. Isn't that...
But in the definitions, athletic event is any Colby Sawyer athletic competition or practice for enrolled student athletes. Non-athletic event is any event not classified as an athletic event above, well, it should say, that above.
Yeah, they were pretty specific about that, that they really thought that if it was an outing club, or a, or a high school, or any other, anybody except us using our fields, they considered that a non-athletic event...
Right.
...that would fall under that no more than 20 per year.
So, Mary Ann, I think a key difference is where we hadn't formally capitalized athletic event within the non-athletic event definition. So, I just capitalized that to then cue us back to the athletic event definition, which would then further whittle that down to being specifically Colby Sawyer athletic competition.
I do understand that a non-athletic event is different than athletic event, and in this instance, Colby Sawyer is being called out as the headline, the owner of these athletic events, if it's an athletic event. What I'm concerned about is the term "non-athletic event." It could be, there's no distinction there that it's not Colby Sawyer. There's no distinction that that is an umbrella statement for other interested, other parties that are using it.
But if we're defining an athletic event as a Colby Sawyer athletic competition, then anything that's not that would be a non-athletic event.
I do see your point that it's counterintuitive to what a high school soccer game would be an athletic event.
Correct.
In this scenario, because we've been specific with the non-athletic and athletic events...
Right.
...I think it leads us to the right intent. It is somewhat counterintuitive to what the general public may consider.
Right. Lowercase athletic event would be anything that where you're kicking a ball around, but athletic event capitalized here in this case means it's a Colby Sawyer-only event. So, the Kirshart High School example would fall under non-athletic event, even though they might be athletes and they might be playing a game, but if, but like, to the zoning, it would be a non-athletic event.
Could we say, because I do think that it's an important distinction, could we say any non-CSC, Colby Sawyer, any non-Colby Sawyer event would be a non-athletic event or something? Because it's just so, it's so awkward, because it is potentially, almost exclusively, another athletic event. It just happens to be, in your point, to your point, Tim, lowercase e, or a, rather, rather than event. So, you know, just the fact that we call out Colby Sawyer and identify that as an athletic event, I, I think it is a real stretch for people to understand that a non-athletic event, say Kirshart's playing, you know, statewide soccer competition, is not an athletic event.
I mean...
And I, you know, I may be stacking BBs here, but, and, and maybe we don't really care about that, but intellectually, logically, it doesn't flow. I understand your point, that it's a small a, and it's a non-Colby Sawyer event, but we're calling it a non-athletic event rather than a non-Colby Sawyer event, because what if, what if Colby Sawyer, as I said, has a senior party down there, and they need lights? Is that an athletic event for Colby Sawyer?
It's a, they're, they're the...
It's a non-athletic event, because the athletic event...
Right.
...definition includes athletic competition or practice for enrolled student athletes.
Right.
So, they get 20 usages a year that might be...
Non-athletic events.
Right. A bonfire that they're hosting for, you know, something, a Kirshart soccer game, a outing club.
So, you're saying Colby Sawyer...
Right. The intent of this is to use the field to light their athletic events. Now, with lights down there, they may want to use that field for other non-athletic events a few times throughout the year.
Who'd they, Colby Sawyer?
Correct. And so, then, it will be up to the athletics department or whoever to figure out how they're going to use those 20 events per year, whether they reserve 10 of them for their own usage of non-athletic, or whether they reserve 10 of them for non-Colby Sawyer athletic events. And I, I do see what you're saying, that it's somewhat counterintuitive, but it's sort of this one umbrella that covers a wide array of special events that could be down there, whether they're Colby Sawyer, non-little athletic event-related, or whether it's unrelated to Colby Sawyer as an institution, community offering, that might include kicking a ball.
I'd like to make a suggestion.
One sec, though, Paul. Can I go to Joe, because he's, he's been waiting to ask a question?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, by defining it this way, you eliminate...
Which way, Joe?
The way it's written, because there's, "defined athletic events by Colby Sawyer students is a subset of all the possible usages, and everything that's not a Colby Sawyer athletic event is a non-event in terms of definition." We have the ability to write the definitions the way we want to, even if it's counterintuitive what somebody might think. These are very specific usage definitions, basically. And you want to have that, because you want to have any gray areas between proper usage for athletic events and non-Colby Sawyer athletic events.
Right. And it's one or the, it's binary, right?
So, if they have a picnic, that's a non-event. If they have a bonfire, that's a non-event.
Right.
And this is only at night, too. You got to remember, this is only at nighttime. They can do whatever they want to in the daytime when the lights are off.
Right. Yeah, just pertaining to lighting. Paul, were you going to say something?
I was going to say, if we struck "non-athletic" and just said "other events," any event not classified as an athletic event.
Why couldn't we say "any event not classified as a CSC athletic event"?
Okay.
If we put CSC in there, that...
Yep.
...takes that out of the mix.
Yep, that would be better, too.
Okay. And...
Rewind a second. Say that again, sorry.
Yeah, then, so, say that again, real quick, then we'll go to Shirley, and then...
Just so I can...
...see what Adam thinks.
Can you say that again, Emily?
Oh, I'm sorry. For a non-athletic event, any event not classified as a CSC athletic event.
But I want to strike the "non-athletic," because I think that's like, you know, it's like lightning. Just say "other events," and then say, "any event not classified as an athletic event, see above."
So, if we say temporary events, and let me zoom in on this, so maybe you can see it more clearly on the screen. So, if we say temporary events, "usage for any non, any event not classified as an athletic event may be granted for up to 20 events per year through the submission of a town temporary event permit." So, then, with athletic events, the definition would be anything that doesn't fall under the "any Colby Sawyer athletic competition or practice for enrolled athletes."
See other events?
Shirley, did you want to say something?
Well, my question is, if, if the college wanted to have a picnic there that might go into the... Well, my question is if, if the college wanted to have a picnic there that might go into the evening, would they need to submit a temporary event permit?
If the lights were going to be used, yep. Because I think that will be the way that we keep, keep a running total on the 20.
Right. Did you, you were going to say something? David?
I think that, that we need to put, to put Colby Sawyer in on the nonathletic event. Any event now classified as a Colby Sawyer event on an athletic field. So we know that it could be any other association wanting to use it, but it's not Colby Sawyer.
So by using the, the def, the defined term athletic event, Colby Sawyer is within that definition in the definitions to be added section?
So it's defined as a Colby Sawyer, to your point.
Yes.
It's defined up above as Colby Sawyer.
Yes.
Only in that case. There was a, this, nonathletic events? No, it's right. I'm just pointing. That was Paul's, suggested to change that to "other events." That's right, Paul? Am I saying that right?
That's right.
What, I don't know what you think of.
Oh, so I just changed it right.
In the definition.
Right, well, right in the usage.
Right.
Which I'm not sure if we.
I think we were talking about.
Because maybe we don't even need a defined term for it. Because if we just say temporary events, "usage for any event not classified as an athletic event."
Right.
May be granted for up to 20.
Anything else is not that then.
Right. Because that, that's basically saying athletic events are allowed, anything that's not that.
Counts as 20. It's a, that's what I kept saying, it's binary, right? It's got to be one or the other. It's either an athletic event, capital A, capital E, or it's something else.
Let me just see if we use "nonathletic" anywhere else.
And to Mary Ann's point, then that would, from a layman's perspective, although God help them if they're reading the zoning, but that would, you know, maybe make it less confusing if they don't see that term. Yeah, please.
I'm thinking of this as a Venn diagram, okay? There's, there are essentially three categories. There is Colby Sawyer athletic events. Then there's Colby Sawyer nonathletic events. And then there's not Colby Sawyer events. And they all potentially intersect if they need lights at the eve, in the evening. What's the matter?
You said, you had two circles for Colby Sawyer, athletic events and nonathletic events. How would they intersect? Why would they intersect?
Because they're Colby Sawyer.
But the way we're doing it is we're saying it's either Colby Sawyer athletics or it's some other thing. So if it's a bonfire, a picnic, or a concert, even if it's a Colby Sawyer thing, that still counts as one of their 20.
Right. Do we care that we're not identifying it as a Colby Sawyer event versus a non-Colby Sawyer?
Well, to Adam's point about maybe we don't need that definition, it feels like the simplest thing is to say it's either an athletic event, capital A, capital E, or it's something else. And, and if it's, it has to be one of the two categories.
It has to be what?
One of the two categories. It either has to be athletic event or something else.
Right. Are we then calling it, rather than a nonathletic event, are we calling it other events?
Paul Gorman had suggested we call it other events. Adam, do you, what's your thought on that, just from a zoning perspective? Are you okay? If, if we want to call it that, he's saying we don't even need it, but I'm asking, like, do you think we should strike it completely? Yeah, I hear your point. Because if it's not an athletic event, it's not.
It's fine as temporary events are.
Right. And that's where Adam changed it.
So where we, where we ended up?
Well, we're debating whether we need the definition up above. But let's let Adam talk for a second.
I mean, I think that by just tying it to anything that it's not an athletic event, it simplifies it by not having another term that's counterintuitive to what some of these sporting events that may not be Colby Sawyer sporting events might create. And so if we just eliminate the nonathletic event definition as a whole.
So does it negate number three, temporary events? Or do we just say? Probably wouldn't negate that.
Look on the screen. It's changed from what's on your paper. So he has it, if you can zoom in. I don't know if you can blow it up. If you, yeah, so "usage for any event not classified as an athletic event." So we don't, we, we lose the nonathletic event language completely.
Okay.
And then just cut that, because it goes back to the idea that it's either an athletic event or it's something else. And so then.
And then up above in definitions, Adam?
We're going to strike.
Does it then say "other event"?
We're going to strike that, potentially, right? We're just going to have athletic event.
So the idea would be, strike the nonathletic event. And then by using athletic event, you're saying anything that is not this, which
Is something else.
Is defined as a Colby Sawyer athletic competition or practice.
And would be listed under number three. Under, not listed, but would be part of lighting requirements, number three.
Right, correct.
It's right here.
All right.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. How do others feel? Are there questions or concerns in terms of cutting that down? I like less is more, generally, so. Good point, Joe.
I, I'm concerned about the, uh, number three, three. Short-term usage for nonathletic events.
Make sure you read up on the, the screen there, Paul, only because we've updated from what's on the paper.
Oh, you have, okay.
So that may make it clearer.
Somebody else can read it, who can?
Yeah, if you turn behind you, of course, that screen's better.
Turn around, it's much better to read there.
Should be on a swivel.
It says, "usage for any event not classified as an athletic event may be granted for up to 20 events per year through the submission of a town temporary event permit." You know, that, this kind of, one, I wonder about who the hell are we to be doing this? You know, this is an independent organization in the town. The town relies on this organization. It seems to me it's in our interests to help them advance what they're trying to do. Now, if you have a problem with this, you know, it just seems to be, and all of a sudden, you're going to say, okay, so the college can only have, allow, the college now is becoming the determiner of this, can only allow 20 events by definition per year. Is that what we want to do? I don't think that's a very good idea, frankly.
I recall, Paul, that we asked the college what number they were comfortable with. And I think it came up as a result of it.
I would, how did the college estimate these numbers? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I think it was the meeting that Jen and Karen were at, the, the last one.
Yeah.
So we, we discussed the fact that the lights will really only be necessary from September to April. And then when you take out December, January, February, and most of March from having the potential to even be used, because it's not plowed down there, that we got down to the three months that had potential for usage. And then when you overlaid that onto the, the number of days that will already be used for the college's games and practices, that it really further whittled down the number of days when there was even going to be an opportunity for another organization to use it. And so the, the 20 was the result of last meeting's discussion with Jen and.
And I, and I hear your concern, Paul, just, just thinking about part of the discussion we've already had around, you know, the intent is for, to lighting the field to, to, to support the college, which obviously I think everyone on this board wants to do with athletic events, but also to make it palatable to neighbors. The thought was that it would be kind of a balance, that they would be able to do their athletic events without a problem. We understand that for recruiting purposes, et cetera. But, and I don't know, Laura, do you want to weigh in at all, like?
Yeah, I know this was a point of discussion at the last meeting that I wasn't here for, and I think that the college is, is fine with this. Would we like to have it unlimited? Sure. Would we like to be able to light all, all, you know, anything on the field? Sure. But it feels like we need to make these concessions to be able to get this through. And I think, you know, that in the future, if the college wants to come back, I think, I think what people need, what our neighbors need, what the community needs to see is, how's this going to work? And I think that if, if at some time in the future, the college wants to come back and light another field or have, or ask for more than 20 events, what I suspect is going to happen is that people are going to say, it's no big deal. We don't see the lights. We don't hear the people. We're good. Go ahead and do it. At this time, I think if, if this is, are the concessions we need to make to have this go through, then the college is happy to do that.
And if I just might add, one of the ways, Paul, I'm helping myself think about it, is it's not about use of the field. It's about use of the lights at night on the field. So it's not limiting the use of the field. It is about lighting the field.
Yep, which means, right, because I hear your point, Paul, about not wanting to tell an independent institution what to do, right? Yeah, I get, I get that. And I think we're trying to strike a balance here.
I'd like to make a comment. I lived for 28 years right across the street from the college. And when I first bought that house, I was thinking to myself, my wife was saying to me, oh, you know, when these kids start yelling and screaming and da-da-da-da-da-da. It was, I lived two blocks off of Copley Square for 10 years. And it was relatively quiet, believe it or not. You'd hear some traffic, but other than that, it was quiet. And I lived here, and it was more quiet. You know, in the summ, in the summertime and the winter, springtime, I'd open the windows. I didn't hear anything. And I lived right on the corner there. So I speak with a little bit of authority about this issue. And I think that, I don't, you know, people that live way down the street and around the corner over there, I, you know, frankly, I don't have much sympathy for them, because I had the experience of living there. And I don't agree with this seem, this feeling that some people articulate, that, you know, it's a riot. It isn't. It happens, I do say, probably on one hand, you could count the number of times when there's some kind of a big celebration and you hear a lot of noise. So what? That's the way it is. Don't buy a house that's across the street from the college.
Yes. Thanks, Paul. Yeah, Joe.
Yeah, one thing, I just wanted to remind people that the original grant of the land was to have no lights at all. This is a concession between the parties who granted the land to the college and what the college needs. So I think it's a good compromise, and we'll see what happens over the next couple of years.
So the last edit that I added back in was under the enforcement section, where we struck the, the two lines that were there and added simply a reference to our enforcement article, which is Article 29 enforcement, Article 29 enforcement to all, oops, sorry, looks like I forgot. Hold on. This is the part we're doing this. Shall apply to all matters of enforcement. And then the last one was under the yard requirements. We found something that had been in there for, I think, like 20 years, that we were just going to delete because it was irrelevant, this portion here that's struck for the, whichever is greater. And I think that included everything. Now, Paul's, Paul's points, which mostly pertained to, let me back up. So the access roads and parking area lighting, so sort of dividing the field lighting from the access road lighting, I think I mentioned that. And then updating the portions where that was, where it was referenced as field lighting, adding in the access roads and parking area lighting in addition. He had suggested a change to the nonathletic events, so we will skip that. So, I'm sorry, three. So those are both field lighting and access path lighting updates. He did have me delete, which of course now I don't have the version open to, to tell you what it is. It was in three.
3.2.
Yes, yes.
It's covered in 4.2.
Right. So there is a redundancy there with the lighting on access roads and parking areas. Because it's covered in. Yes.
Yeah, 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 thank you. One sec.
Do you have an old version with you? Hold on. Let me just compare an old version, because I'm confused about what it is he had me delete, and I went ahead and deleted it. So it was the lighting on access roads and parking areas may stay on for 30 minutes after field lighting has been turned off. Because then, then under 4.2, we cover that, that they have to be dimmed to 50%, no more than 30 per, 30 minutes. And then we say the second line there is, "lighting on access roads and parking areas shall be required to be turned off no more than 30 minutes." So we stated the same thing in two different spots, so we just deleted it. And then he had me in three, three, third bullet.
We'll have to change that wording slightly. Yes.
Okay. I have a problem with that, too. You'll be wishing that I had stayed home tonight. So, "short-term usage for nonathletic events may be granted." Who are we to tell them it has to be 20?
So, yeah, no, I hear, I hear that, Paul. That's, we have the updated language up here now about usage for any event, so we're not doing the, can you blow that up? I'm sorry. Usage for any event. And I think that gets to your point about the, the 20 that we, you know, we heard earlier, that this is trying to strike a compromise between Colby Sawyer events that are lit and then non-events, non-Colby Sawyer athletic events that are lit. And, and the college, as, as Laura just indicated, is okay with 20. They would love to have no cap, because that would just be easier, right? And they would just, to do it, but as she said, perhaps in a few years, people are thinking it's no big deal. They come back, they say we'd like 30, or we need 40, or whatever it is, you know, you never know. But as to make it palatable, I think is the thinking here.
So I think that, yeah.
I don't think we should be talking about that.
Okay, go ahead. David had a question.
Because we've had the discussion about nonathletic events, I'd like to go back to the lighting requirements, number one. So does this mean that no lighting can be put on for nonathletic events? From, let's say the town wanted to put something on, but if it's not a Colby Sawyer athletic event, no lighting is going to be put on for those other 20, 20 activities?
No, no.
That's what that says. Shall be allowed at the, within the institutional recreational zone, all lighting. So is that going to be for Colby Sawyer activities and the 20 other? They're going to have lighting?
Yeah, that's why there's a cap.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, so that if they had an event, if the high school or the outing club came down in a, in a spring month and it wasn't, they didn't need the lights, that would not count against their 20, because none, none of the neighbors would be the wiser, presumably. So that's, that's the idea here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking. So.
So I think that gets all of Paul's in there. So what I'll do tomorrow morning, realistically tomorrow afternoon, we'll watch the video and make sure that we captured everything from the, the last meeting. Get you guys an updated copy that actually has everything. And then if we can, have a very brief meeting on Friday morning to actually take the vote to move this forward to the 14th of January. Then I think that would be the, the way forward. I do want to share very quickly that I got an anonymous letter to the planning officer, and I just want to read it to you guys. And so it says, "Listening to the recent planning board discussion regarding lighting at the Colby Sawyer fields, might similar courtesy scrutiny be extended to other commercial and municipal properties, specifically the intrusion of building sign and parking light emitted beyond property boundaries? Example, Dunkin' Sign, Stallman Parking, Whipple Hall Police Parking. Maybe dark skies could be applied townwide to all new repaired and replacement bulbs and fixtures." So I'm not, obviously not sure who this was, but I sort of, part of doing this, I'm hoping they're watching the videos to explain the fact that with all other offerings in the zoning ordinance, their lighting is constrained through the site plan review process. And so our lighting regulations are in the site plan review regulations. We do require downcast lighting in those regulations. We do require downcast lighting in those regulations. This lighting is very specific to athletic events. And so that's why it's handled differently. I just wasn't sure how to respond to this person, other than to mention it in the meeting, so.
That's great. Thank you, Adam, for that.
I have one more clarification. This is under three, two, usage schedule. Where the last bullet, "A schedule of field usage must be posted on the website of Kobe Sawyer College." Is it, my question, is that pre, I mean, what's planned, or is it after the fact, what was used?
That was not meant to keep, to keep track of the 20, is that what you're asking?
Right, so I think the, the idea being, you know, and it could be, if Kier Sarge calls that day and says, "I want to use it tonight", that there would be some event, I think there's an event calendar on the athletics page. Is that what Jen said?
Let me just clarify that the event calendar that's on there is for Kobe Sawyer events. It's not a, it's not a general field usage. And, and that was in response to what was on here in the original iteration of this that asked that we submit a schedule to the town. And we said, "Well, we already have this on our website." And, and one of the issues about that is that it's subject to change with weather and things like that. But instead, and we were like, and who's gonna enforce that, or, or look at that? But that it was already posted, and I think that's why the change was made, to say, yes, we will continue to post it.
Yep. I think the idea is that neighbors should be able to look and say, you know, oh, there is a, an event on Sunday night. You know, if they, in theory, the dark sky shouldn't get in the way of this, but if they wanted to, you know, plan to look at a, something that light pollution would get in the way of, or a meteor shower, something, that they would have the ability to plan ahead for those sorts of things.
So it's about planning?
I think so.
The usage of the lights?
Right, not, not notification. Yeah, if that makes sense.
Right, so their notification on that, the only thing that would be capped would be the Sundays, which obviously if they're using it Sundays, someone will let us know. And then the 20 per year, which we'll keep track of through the temporary event permit.
Cool. Okay, in the interest of getting people on the road, because the weather isn't great, are there any other final questions? We just need to determine the time for a Friday morning brief meeting.
Does nine o'clock work for folks? Yes.
He was thinking nine, he was saying, yeah, make it a little easier for.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty? Is eight thirty okay? I'm looking around. Yes.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, I mean, that's the intent, that we've gone through this now. We'll have, Adam's gonna send us the updated version after watching the video to make sure he didn't miss anything tonight. I think he got it. But, just to make sure. Are folks okay with eight thirty on Friday? Laura? Okay. Can, can you send someone? Possible, okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, we'll be here, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, so.
Okay, thank you, and I, I know that, I apologize for making the mistake, but I just think we fixed a few other things that might have gotten glossed over had we not. So maybe it's a happy accident.
Exactly.
So this is also a reminder of the selectmen's gathering, I think it's called.
Winter gathering on Monday?
Next Monday morning at eight thirty?
Okay, all right, so we will wrap up this. I don't believe we have any new business, any other department updates, anything like that? Janet, did you have anything you wanted to share? Just use the mic if you.
The police subcommittee group recommended that the town pursue purchasing the Garvey property on Siemens Road for a site for a new police station. So I think that's probably the biggest thing.
Yep, Garvey. Yeah, Joe.
Janet, a part, a parts, part of this, is it their property or the entire property?
It would be the entire property.
No, no, but it's gonna print all 20 acres, or just whatever?
No, just a portion.
Had they talked about reducing it, I guess I hadn't heard that.
So the.
Thanks, Laura. Thank you, appreciate you coming.
Thanks, Laura.
Drive safe.
I'm not sure if.
Likewise, thank you.
Thanks.
So I happen to have it open, so if you look at the screen, this is from yesterday morning's meeting. So the.
That's right, they do.
This exterior boundary is the entire Garvey lot. The piece that the town would potentially be looking to purchase, that the committee has supported, is this front, I forget, I think it was like 3.2, 3.5 acres, thereabouts, with the police station, a two-story police station, sort of central on the lot, with the, this entranceway being designed to meet town road standard, so that at some point, it could be extended to gain access to the rear of the lot. Obviously, you can see that these are all wetlands. So the, the frontage that Cotton and John would be left with is, you know, not necessarily the most easily accessible frontage. And so through my discussions with them, you know, we, we all agreed that it's important to have whatever the access is for the police station able to be extended and bridge this narrowest spot of the wetland to provide them access for whatever use they might like in the rear. So, you know, that's, who knows what could come down the line. But at this point, it would be this parcel that would be purchased if this were to be successful. This would be the public entrance area, and then, you know, gated off here with the restricted area in the back for staff parking. And then the lower level would be where the Sally ports. Now, these buildings, don't be alarmed by them, they are block diagrams. So in, you know, architectural speak, these have not been designed and finessed at this point. This is the space block diagram that says, this is how many square feet we need for a training room. This is how many square feet we need for dispatch. This is how they can fit together to build the overall building. And this is generally what that would look like on the outside. Now, they have not gotten to a point of making decisions of materials. Will there be a front portico covering the entry? You know, all those sorts of things. This is essentially a, a test analysis to say, this is generally what the scale of the building would be with a, a general layout. Further design work, once you know what you're pursuing, would finesse those details. So, don't be alarmed, obviously, there's some topography here that requires some retaining walls and things. But there will be windows, it won't be a building without any penetration.
Yeah, and I don't want to get too much into it tonight, only because I'm concerned about people getting home safely. But yeah, thank you for that update. Are there any, anything else?
Adam, Adam, is it, where is Sergeant Road on this diagram?
You can just see the, the entrance over here, Joe.
So it's a little bit off the, it's a little bit north towards the college?
Slightly, yes. Yep, this is Tim's corner here.
Okay, any, anything else, Janet, from your perspective?
The, the new utility truck is here for the fire department, but it hasn't been lettered yet.
Okay, good to know.
They're excited.
Good, I'm glad.
And the transfer station got their very first dedicated car that wasn't a hand-me-down from somewhere else, so they are very excited.
Moving up in the world. Was it at the swap table, or they just?
It looks quite nice, too, I think it's the first white Public Works truck. They increased the emblem, they're, they're feeling their own identity.
Nice, love it. Any, any other comments or questions? I don't think we have any other business, but anything else from anybody? So we can get on the road. All right, all we would need then, seeing, hearing none, seeing none, is a motion to dismiss, to adjourn, rather. Okay, thank you both.